So, welcome to this next session. It's on innovation in energy technology. But before we get going, I have a couple of reminders. First is that this session is on the record. Second, please turn off your cellphone ringers so that they remain quiet during the session. Remember, you can tweet during the session using hashtag AC Summit. And finally, what we'll do here is, I'll begin with some opening remarks. Then we'll have each member of the panel speak in turn. I'll introduce them before they speak. And then we'll have an open Q and A following the presentations. This session on innovation in energy technology has, I think, already been set up pretty well in previous talks here at the summit. Yesterday, for example, a number of people referred to the importance that energy innovation, technology innovation, has in sort of lowering the cost of renewables and thereby lowering the bar that policy has to achieve in getting us to a low-carbon future. Certainly, R and D in energy and innovations that come from that benefit our society in at least three very important ways. One of those is it's better for the economy. Second is it's good for security. And third is good for the environment. It helps us deal with climate change issues, CO2 emissions. And I think we heard about all three of those themes yesterday. Earlier this year, Secretary Schultz and I published a book called Game Changers: Energy on the Move, with the goal of highlighting how developments in R and D in the energy area have in fact achieved those three benefits to society: economic benefits, security benefit, and environmental benefits. And there are lots of examples you can put together of those examples where technology has already had an impact coming out of R and D. A great example there is shale gas research on hydraulic fracturing, research on directional drilling has enabled the shale and oil gas boom in the U.S., which clearly had an economic benefit, lots of jobs, a security benefit, and also has had a substantial environmental benefit. It's been the big driver for decrease in CO2 emissions in the U.S. On a more current timescale, advances in solid-state chemistry and physics have led to a number of advances in solid-state lighting, LED lighting, which is emerging in the market today and starting to have a big impact on efficiency in lighting and lowering electricity and power use in indoor lighting. And then out on the horizon, further out there, as an example of many of the research projects going on in labs in universities and laboratories around the world today, I'd cite solar fuels. So, developing new technologies to enable us to use solar energy to combine CO2 split water to get hydrogen and make fuels that could be used for storage and for transportation in the long-term future. We're going to talk about research in a university setting at MIT, but clearly universities don't do this alone. To take innovations and get them out into the marketplace, it's been a fundamental tenet at the MIT Energy Initiative to work very closely with industry. And so, we work with a set of industrial partners, all the way from concept and research to applied research projects to commercialization of technologies. The panel we've assembled here today is, I think, a great set of examples of how to innovate and how to move innovation into the marketplace. So, this is not just a group of scientists and engineers and innovators, but they're also entrepreneurs. Among the panelists collectively, I think we have 200 patents up here, some 14 different startup companies that have been involved in moving new technologies into the marketplace. So, I think you'll hear how to go from concept, new technology, to devices and commercial developments. So, with that, let me introduce the first panelist. That will be Vladimir Bulivik, who's a professor of electrical engineering and computer science at MIT. He's also Associate Dean of Engineering for Innovation and is co-director of the new Innovation Initiative at MIT, which launched just a year ago. He has some 60 patents or more than 60 patents. He's started up a number of companies and I think has led in nanotechnology and developing new devices and products from nanotechnology. Vladimir?
Thank you. Well, it's an honor to be standing in front of you. My goal for this very brief presentation is to tell you of a technology that you're very familiar with, and yet the one that has actually been one of the fastest-moving, fastest-developing technologies in recent years: solar technology. And my goal would be to reimagine it, to think about what's next for it and how do we advance it beyond where it's at. So, just as a metric, today's solar technology provides about 0.8% of world's electricity. If you asked me a few years ago, that number would have been only about 0.1%. So, remarkable eightfold, tenfold increase from where we used to be not long time ago. As a matter of fact, if you look over the last dozen years, last 12 years, and ask what is the rate of growth in deployment of solar, it's about 53% from year to year to year. Indeed, project further naively, and you can say in about dozen years, over 100% of world's electricity will be met by solar technology. Now, that is a challenge, right, to meet, a challenge that goes ahead and asks, well, what is really stopping us from truly enabling us to take that 53% growth as we go from year to year to year? There are many solar technologies right now available, and more importantly, there are many emerging solar technologies that are coming to market. The ones that we are very familiar with indeed are wafer-type technologies, primarily based on silicon technology. And indeed, silicon right now and still, and for some time, will be the king among the solar deployments. But there are a whole set of new thin-film technologies as well that are coming to market. And this particular slide shows you a whole set of options. Now, we're not going to go through all these options detail by detail, but I do want to show you the opportunity as well as some unique differences between what today is and what tomorrow will be, and how will hence we'll be able to reimagine what solar technology can be for us. The one way to look at it is to ask, well, what is the solar opportunity? If you look at very simplistically material use, take a look at silicon, it's over 100 micron-thick layer. Now, mind you, it's good to compare anything that small to, let's say, the thickness of your hair. So, there it is, there is a human hair. Also, red blood cell, just to again get you a sense of scale. Well, today's thin-film technologies, are they based on cadmium telluride you might have heard of, or more recently, things like quantum dots or molecules or polymers? These are unusual new material sets that have been around us for many, many years, but we now know how to use them in a form of solar cells. Those are particularly, particularly thin, less than a micron. 500 nanometers is written there for quantum dot PVs. Well, that's half a micron, very, very, very small. Half a micron, well, that's on the order of 1/200th of a thickness of your hair, just to get a sense of how little material you need and actually absorb the sunlight and give you electricity. So, what are the opportunities? Well, think about uses of these new nano-structured quantum dot polymeric molecular films and come up with the lightweight, modular, or integrated solar technologies, technologies that can actually now provide you solar on any surface that you touch. Our building blocks to get us there, I said molecules, polymers, nanotubes, graphene, quantum dots, these are the elements of nanoscale we have been very earnestly investigating over past, oh, roughly speaking, 20 years. Scientists, technologists like myself, have spent time trying to understand how nanoscale looks, how do we poke it, how do we move it around, in order to make the next steps, in order to actually start applying it these days into the ways that we can deploy technologies that have never been seen before. There are plenty of new developments, but one thing you should bear in mind, anything, anything that's made of physical matter, any hardware technology, takes about a decade to translate from an idea to impact, from an idea to the actual application in a broad scale across the world, a decade. We have just begun, actually, that decade cycle, and I can expect in the next five years, you'll start seeing tremendous transformations with new technologies we have just recently imagined. Here is example of nanotechnology you might have seen around. It's a stained glass window, this is from 1564, I believe. Why is it nano? Well, because it turns out the color in that nanoglass, in that particular stained glass window, comes from metal nanoparticles, five, six, seven nanometer chunks of gold and silver embedded in that glass. Those are the nanotechnologists of the 16th century, right, advancing technology that made a huge difference from perspective of providing colored glass. Or those of you who are wearing colored ties or colored skirts or colored jackets, those particular colors come again from nanoscale. Unless the molecules were on a scale of nanometers, you wouldn't be able to see color coming out of them, otherwise they would look dark, black. Most of our suits are made of much bigger molecules than nanoscale. Result of that is that nanoscale strongly interacts with visible light. And as a result, uses of these nanoscale materials allow us to start thinking of things that go beyond conventional cell. Here's one. This is a solar cell made of pigments that are typically used to paint cars. The blue and red car paint pigments, so-called perolin and talasianines, have been painted on this piece of paper, attached to, painted on top of their electrodes, shine light and you should get some electricity. And so, this particular video, if you can have the next slide, oops, actually, I'll show you this, and I'm going to show you a video of it. This particular solar cell, it turns out, is very flexible because it's on a piece of paper, and you can indeed flex it multiple times. And this just shows you an example of taking this piece of organic thin film, bending it over and over again, and every time getting the same response. As a matter of fact, you can bend it over 100 times, you won't see any change in performance of this solar cell. Now, the best thing to do is to actually show you a video of it operating. So, here it is, this is a piece of paper, we're going to connect it and shine light on it, and that little LCD clock up on the top runs because light shines on that piece of paper, the paper generates enough power to run that piece of electronics. But it is a piece of paper, so you might as well treat this solar cell like a piece of paper. So, we're going to feed it through a laser printer to see if it can survive what we call in science the stress test, being able to sustain 300 Celsius and fusing of the toner right on top of the cell. Let's see if it still operates, attach it to the electrodes, shine light on it, still works. No other solar cell that I'm aware of can actually sustain that kind of utilization. As a matter of fact, you can now imagine solar cells being used in variety of new ways. Any surface you touch should be able to be solar active. Is it documents, is it boxes, is it newspapers, you still see them? Any surface you touch should be able to be solar active. And hence, when you look at the places that really need power, the power, places that are off-grid, places like this, well, to them, actually, what's much more important than the efficiency of the solar cell, to them, what's much more important is this metric, watts per kilogram. Tell me how many watts you're going to get per kilogram of the cell, because the way that cell is going to reach the village, the last, what's known as last 15 kilometers, the last nine miles, that happens on the back of someone who's carrying that cell over to the village. That's the most expensive part of the whole process of installing the solar cell. And hence, as a result, if I'm going to make an impact and provide power to about a billion people or more that have no access to grid electricity, this might be a way, this might be a metric I might care about a lot more than the efficiency. Indeed, these very early nano-structured solar cells do not compare to silicon in their performance. They might be off by as much as factor of five when it comes to their power conversion efficiency, but they only weigh about 1/100th or 1/1,000th of the weight of a typical silicon cell, and hence can be deployed more, much, much more broadly than any other technology that we are aware of. What about other ways of deploying solar? How about this one? This is a solar cell that looks like absolutely nothing. It is entirely transparent and hence invisible, so here I'm going to outline where it is. It's invisible solar technology. The way it works is it actually does absorb light, but absorbs infrared part of the spectrum, the part of the spectrum that your eye cannot see. The visible part of the spectrum passes through it. Hence, it indeed allows you to make a cell that is, well, invisible. Here it is. I'm going to go ahead and choose to mount it on top of an electronic display. Why a display? Because I want to show you a technology that you can look through and yet power your particular electronic piece of equipment. So, anytime I uncover the cell, you get about 10 volts coming out of it. Anytime we cover it, the voltage goes down back to zero, just to show you that the cell works. But throughout, we've been looking through it, so let me unsnap it from the actual display so you get a sense of seeing the cell itself. The cell itself is transparent, and hence any surface you look through can be covered with solar active actual films. So, an example might be, if you want to have it on your glasses, why would you want to do that? Well, usually, you use your glasses in environment that has light. What can you use power in your glasses? Well, maybe to power a Bluetooth radio, maybe to power a hearing aid. As a matter of fact, the amount of power you should be able to generate with this very first technology, very first generation of this technology, should be sufficient to allow you never to have to recharge your hearing aid again. How about my little electronic device? Well, the same thing. I never ever have to recharge my Kindle again if I use this particular top surface of organic thin film that absorbs the light during the use of the cell as I would typically use it. Now, this, these are gizmos, are they going to really make the change in the energy structure of the world? Well, not initially, but these are brain-new technologies, and I said that it's going to take five to 10 years to deploy them to scale. And in about 10 years, you should be able to do this. You should be able to make them last about 20, 30 years. You should be able to go ahead and deploy them over large areas. And in the process of doing that, well, for an office building like this, you should be able to displace about a quarter or more of electricity of a typical office building if the windows indeed are coated with the same type of, new type of nanotechnology. How expensive? Well, as expensive as it is to print, that's how expensive it is to put down these solar cells. Indeed, what you see as you look at the landscape of where technology is heading is we started off with fairly simple building blocks like atoms that make wafers, that gave us very simple materials but actually complex fabrication processes to make such things as silicon solar cells. And we are heading to a transformation where we start thinking about using complex nanomaterials, complex but relatively easy to synthesize, and hence also fairly easy to deploy as a printed structures over large surfaces. Let me get you a sense of how big, for example, would be a terawatt size, terawatt per year silicon factory. So, it would be about this big, about 2,000 kilometers squared, and I superimposed it on Istanbul just to get a sense of relative scales. Well, how about I go ahead and come up with a printed solar technologies, not a silicon technology? Let me show you the scale of that particular factory. Oh, it's small, let's see, I have to zoom in. Oh, wait, right there, oh, there it is. It's about the size of this hotel. And that same technology, well, technology of printed solar cells that uses printers like this, or probably more likely printers like this, roll-to-roll type printing that gets you large-area solar cells over large, flexible surfaces, that is what is around the corner. That is what is around the corner by adapting entirely new means, entirely new material sets, and advances in a nanotech understanding that now leads us to the entirely new ways of thinking of what solar cells can be reimagined to be. I also look at a very simple question of, there is a just insatiable need for energy, right, because it is indeed connected to the Global Development Index. Can we do something about this particularly insatiable need? And the answer is absolutely yes. Nanotechnology man will be able to live exactly the same lifestyle of us today, but it's about half the energy footprint of us in the United States, where the United States are used as a metric of an extreme use of energy and yet very comfortable lifestyles of living. As a matter of fact, by looking at where the energy is used, in the United States, we spend about 280 kilowatt-hours per day per person, that should be able to be reduced to less than 100 kilowatt-hours per day per person through adoption of nanotech advances. Indeed, one way to ask it would be to say, instead of using fuels to run the world, can I use electricity to run the world? Because at the end of the day, we right now burn fuels to make electricity at about 30% efficiency, going from coal and natural gas to electricity. We drive cars by burning fuels to get motion. That burning of the fuel to drive your car is only 15% efficient. If you use electricity, you can make 90% efficient motors, hence why we have Teslas and Volts, these new types of vehicles that are much more energy-efficient. Add all those things up, and if your starting element is electricity, not fuel, you'll be able to live exactly the same lifestyle you do today, but at half the energy intensity of today. How do we generate that electricity? Well, through the deployment of electricity-capturing technologies, renewable electricity-capturing technologies. Indeed, solar plays a significant part of that vision. The challenge? The challenge is the scale, the scale of deployment, the opportunity, and entirely new ways of thinking about deploying those material sets, embedding them in material sets we already have, and utilizing them as thin films, deployable as thin films, on top of those already built elements inside the fabric of what we use every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vladimir. Before you settle in too much, let me just ask you one question. You talked a little bit about, at the beginning, about silicon, very, certainly today's dominant technology. Towards the end, you've got emerging thin films, some new polymers, quantum dots, which offer the opportunity to be flexible. There is research today on thin-film silicon, slicing silicon wafers very, very thinly. How do you see silicon versus these emerging thin-film materials in the long haul?
It's a fantastically good question. From perspective of silicon, silicon will be a dominant technology for foreseeable future of next five, six, seven years, maybe even longer. As the thin-film technology matures and proves itself in longevity, the one thing that any solar technology needs to prove is that it's able to last about 20 to 30 years in a field. New, novel ways of deployment in a form of, is it electronic devices or integrated, building integrated structures, might allow us to relax that timeframe, but silicon will be a dominant technology for quite a while. Hence, the present technical advancements of making, is it thinner wafers, is it cast wafers, are fantastic advancements for maintaining, while reducing the cost of the status quo technology, silicon. But a radical redefine is on the horizon, a radical redefine that eliminates the most weighty part of the device, which is the glass substrate that contains, that supports the cell, as well as reduces the material use and energy use in the process of making of the cells through the new types of printing. So, I can see silicon being around for a while, but I think as time goes on over next five to 10 years, it will be significantly challenged by the emergence and deployment of the thin-film technologies.
Thank you very much. So, a good segue to the next speaker is that, one of the challenges with solar is that it's intermittent, and to deal with that, we need storage technologies. Professor Yat Ming Chang is the next speaker. He's an expert in electrochemical storage technology. He's a Kiosera Professor of Ceramics in the Department of Material Science and Engineering at MIT. He's won the Economist Energy and Environmental Innovation Award in 2012. He has produced numerous patents on his own and started up a number of companies, maybe he'll allude to some of those in his presentation. So, yep?
Thank you, Bob. Well, batteries is the area that I've been working in for about almost two decades now. And as a science and engineer, you're drawn to batteries because you ask the question, how could such a simple device be so hard to improve upon, right? And so, you know, batteries, you rarely praise your battery, you typically complain about your battery, right? And so, you know, where's Moore's Law for batteries, right? It doesn't really exist. And fundamentally, the reason is because when it comes to storing energy, electrical energy, you really can't accomplish the same function for fewer electrons or fewer photons the way that you can with communications and IT. So, I'll tell you a little bit about the scaling of batteries today and what we're looking to for the future. And I want to point out that at the bottom of my slide, there's a logo there for the Joint Center for Energy Storage Research. This is the largest block grant for battery research that the U.S. government has ever funded, started about two years ago. Acronym says J. Caesar, and sometimes we say, you know, hail J. Caesar, right? But, so, a lot of the work that I'll tell you about was done under this program, right? So, I'm going to begin with a little story relating to my wife's family, who, my wife's from Hawaii, her parents have lived in Maui for 40 years. And, you know, the Hawaiian islands have all kinds of renewable energy that you could tap. And you see in the lower right-hand corner, that's actually, you know, their home, and for 40 years, they've had this hot water collector on the roof, and it's worked beautifully for 40 years, they haven't had to replace it, very happy with that. Two years ago, they put in a silicon solar panel, right? They're much less happy with that because the electricity rates in Maui are the highest in the United States, 40 cents a kilowatt hour, and they have had no relief with, of that rate since putting in their solar panel. And the issue is storage. So, it turns out that in Maui, there's relatively little middle-of-the-day industry to consume the electricity that's generated. So, you have all this electricity generated from the installed PV. Maui Electric has the highest per capita usage of renewables of any utility in the country, right? But in the absence of storage, what happens is that everybody comes home in the early evening, turns on the TV, the stove, washing machine, and they're using the same fossil fuel-generated electricity, right? So, here's an example where renewable, the relief of electricity rates cannot happen without storage, right? So, it turns out that we can think of storage for this kind of application as occurring at many different size scales. The wind farm, I'll tell you a little bit more about this particular wind farm in a second, but it goes all the way down to home energy storage, residential scale. Today, there are four companies in Japan that are selling residential, what they call HEMS, Home Energy Management Systems. And it's an additional appliance, right? It sits outside the home, and it's a battery, and it, you know, it prevents brownouts, blackouts, and also in some applications, what I have in the middle there, substation level, or even say, small-scale commercial establishments, there are a lot of stores in, let's take the convenience store in Japan. Every street has a convenience store on the corner, right? And if you have a energy policy such as demand charges, where your highest usage for a 15-minute period during the year sets your electricity rate for the whole year, there's a great motivation to clip those high-usage times, let's say during the summer when it's hot, right? And so, if you're a small convenience store, you have an option of storing electricity to get a lower rate, or groceries. And so, compact storage of this kind of electrical, of a battery system in a small convenience store is very important at application. Now, substations, every substation does not come free with a parking lot next door, right? So, storage even in substation environments requires compact storage, right? But then we have the wind farm scale, things like that, where you do have a lot of space to work with. And the particular wind farm here in West Virginia has 32 megawatts of storage, one of the larger installations in the, in the world today, right? And my next slide is to show you that over the last decade, large-scale batteries have begun to be deployed, and Forbes recently had an article that showed the world's 10 largest installations, right? It turns out that four of these are based on a battery technology that we commercialized out of MIT about a decade ago, right? And it turns out, that was a technology that started off in power tools, was first used in the DeWalt 36-volt power tool line, enabled a new high-voltage power tool, right? The trailers that you see there, each one has 82,000 power tool cells in it, right? And the point, the reason I make that point about power tools is that this technology was very good at high power, but did not have particularly long runtime or duration or total energy, right? And so, even though we started to see large-scale deployment, these were for applications such as mitigating the ramping of the wind energy into the grid so as not to damage the grid. It was a high-power, short-duration application. The cost was too high and has been too high for, for instance, storing that solar energy or that wind energy over the periods where you don't have generation, right? And so, that's really the need that we're looking for now in going into the future, right? What's driving it in part is policy, and I want to point out California, a leader in this area, as it has been in many others, and they have a mandate that the Public Utility Commission put in place a couple of years ago, that by 2020, 1.3 gigawatts of storage. And so, we want to make a distinction between power and energy. So, 1.3 gigawatts, but here we're looking for 1.3 gigawatts for renewables, which means that it has to run for several hours, right? And so, that translates to five to six gigawatt-hours of storage by 2020, right? And that's an enormous amount of storage compared to what we've had up to this point. And this is really now starting to push the deployment of larger and larger storage systems, right? So, when we think of it from the fundamental chemistry point of view, So when we think of it from the fundamental chemistry point of view, I'll spend a few slides here explaining how a battery scientist thinks about the problem, right? What's really important at this point is cost, getting the cost of storage down. Secretary Moniz said yesterday that over the last four years, the price of batteries have come down by about 60%. That's on the right path. In terms of dollars per kilowatt hour of stored energy, our general goal is the top of this plot, $100 per kilowatt hour. A decade ago, an electric vehicle battery was $1,000 per kilowatt hour, right? Today, it's about 300, right? But what happens is if we can get it to 100, what that means is that, that residential backup for that, let's say you have a 10-kilowatt rooftop panel system that costs you maybe $20,000, the storage for that will, to go overnight, will only be about $5,000, right? And so today, they're about equal in cost, so you would double the cost of your system to have storage, but you can bring it down to about 25% if we reach that $100 per kilowatt hour, right? So this plot talks about the cost of storage, dollars per kilowatt hour, just taking the elements that go into the battery, right? So this is the lowest-cost form of the elements, right? And when you look at this plot, you see that, well, as a function of year, we start with the lead-acid battery in 1860 and run up to the present day, and there's, there's no real trend here, and some of the most recently-produced battery technologies are the most expensive, right? And if it's above, if it's anywhere near that $100 per kilowatt hour number just for the elements, there's no way that we'll produce a whole system that can reach that cost, right? So the next version of this slide is where we actually take those elements, now we produce the materials that store energy, the two electrodes that go into the battery, the cathode and the anode. And so the added value materials is what's shown here, and there are a lot of different chemistries here, and I won't go into detail about them, but when you look at this plot, you see that the slope has the wrong sign, right? So it's actually a positive slope, right? And so some of the most recently-produced, for instance, lithium-ion systems have the most, are the most expensive on a dollar-per-stored-energy basis. So this is perhaps more a message to my fellow researchers than as to you, that we have to start focusing in different directions. So now, I'll talk about some possible directions for this. I've highlighted here sulfur, right? Two chemistries that use sulfur, lithium sulfur and sodium sulfur, and I'll give you an example of why this is an interesting direction for us, right? Oil-gas refining produces enormous amounts of sulfur, right? And here's a few mountains of sulfur, right? So in Alberta, Canada, the sulfur from the tar sands oil that's being refined today is generating so much sulfur that the current solution to stockpiling it is to produce the equivalent of a sulfur pyramid, right? And these are melted in large blocks, the blocks are being stacked, they'll get taller, right? And right now, the volume you see there is actually already several times the volume of the Great Pyramid, right? So what can we do with the sulfur, right? It's a lot of sulfur. It can be used for fertilizer, but it has to be shipped a long way, right? One becomes interested in sulfur, and it's a coincidence, more than anything else, that sulfur is actually a really good battery material, a battery electrode, right? This is my next slide. If we make a battery that uses sulfur as one electrode and lithium as the other electrode, it turns out it has an energy that's several times the energy per mass of the battery that you have in your cellphone or laptop today, right? The energy of a battery is the voltage, which is the vertical axis, and the product of that and the capacity, the amount of charge that it holds, which is horizontal axis. So the total energy is the area under each of these curves, and you see the difference between lithium, with lithium coal but oxide, historical and today, continues to today, the cellphone chemistry, right? And what sulfur could do for us, right? And so how can we make that sulfur work, right? Well, this isn't the first time that technologists have recognized this, because lithium sulfur battery research started about 30 years ago, and today, in the Zephyr that you see here, which is the, you know, the world-record-setting UAV, this actually uses lithium sulfur batteries from a company called Scion, right? However, the technology at this point can only use a fraction of the energy that's actually available, and the reason that we don't use it today, you don't use it today, is that the lifetime of this system is, you know, perhaps a year of use, right? And it doesn't have all of the attributes that you need to make it a successful battery technology, right? But we're motivated by the issues that I just showed you, right? So, whoop, let me back up a second. So one thing, now I'll take a slightly deeper dive into a specific project, I'm working my way down to some technical details here. One of the things we've been motivated to do is to make that sulfur electrode work better, right? And to do that, we have to solve two problems. One is the fact that sulfur, when we use as a battery electrode, expands by about a factor of two in its volume. And so it's an electromechanical device as well, and we have to find a way to relieve that volume expansion, or else it will degrade the battery, it'll destroy itself, right? And so the way we've been doing that is to take the sulfur and instead of using it in the solid form, using it in a dispersed solution form. So we make a solution of sulfur, a solubilized sulfur. But the next problem we face is that sulfur is very electrically insulating, right? And a battery for the electrode to work, we have to be able to get the electrons in and out. So now we have to find a way to tune that material to make it conduct electricity, right? And so we've done that by making, through a nanoengineering approach, where we take that solubilized sulfur and now add to it a network of electrical conductor, nanoscale particles of conductor, and we've produced this fluid, right? And we have a nickname for this fluid, call it Cambridge crude, right? Has, it looks like crude oil, right? But it's a, it's a high-energy-density battery electrode that will flow, right? And then we look at this and say, now we have a high-energy-density conductor fluid, it's like a liquid wire, right? And so how can we build a battery around that? This is a better way to use sulfur. We can make it last longer, we can get five times the capacity out of it of the historical lithium sulfur battery. And so now we start thinking about how to use this, and we take this fluid, and this slide is full of technical detail and may bring you back to your fluid mechanics course at some point, right? But the main thing is that this flowable electrode we created has the consistency of ketchup, okay? So imagine, now you have a battery electrode, and it's like ketchup, right? It has both the benefits, it doesn't have all the benefits of ketchup, right? Stores a lot more energy than ketchup, right? But it flows like ketchup, right? And so we say, okay, how do we make a battery out of this material? Well, let me now talk about the next, the, the other major problem with battery technology today. These are complex devices, they're simple on the outside, they're complicated on the inside, right? And in order to make them work, it's a very expensive manufacturing process, right? They're wound like filo dough, take apart your battery, many, many layers, but there's a lot of inactive material, material that has no function electrochemically, doesn't store any energy, but you need it to make the battery work. The way we make it is in huge plants. With the plot on the right, the horizontal axis is the cost of the factory for, you know, here are a couple of dozen battery manufacturers in the world. And the ones at the bottom, who have spent more than a billion dollars per factory, are the ones who have the lowest-cost basis. So to get into the battery manufacturing game today is a billion-dollar expense, right? You may have heard about the Tesla Gigafactory, where they've basically said is, we're going to stretch that axis out a factor of five, and we'll beat everybody on price, right? So this is one of the longstanding problems in this industry, the fact that it's, it's an expensive proposition and requires a kind of scaling that has, you know, if the demand isn't there and you build the scale, what happens is that you go out of business. And this has happened to multiple battery companies as a result. So we started thinking about this and saying, what's a better way to use this kind of energy storage material? And there's a completely different architecture that's also being developed today, which is something called a flow battery. And the, the reason that this is potentially better is that rather than having a very complicated device with many layers, as I've described, we can instead build a bolt-together system in which we take something like this flowing electrode I showed you, and flow it through an energy or a power-generating cell, and then scale the size simply through the tanks that we have, right? So now it looks more like a chemical plant, but it's mostly plumbing, rather than a lot of complicated thin layers, right? And so this device, called a flow battery, has been under development for about the past 20 years, and now is starting to see some deployment in the, in the real world as well. But when we look at this, you know, my, our next speaker, Professor Slocum, we got together and he had a brainstorm about this and said, you know, instead of building all this plumbing, which is already, you know, conceivably better than the way we build batteries today, why don't we build something that's even simpler, something that's passively driven? And in particular, what if we let gravity do the mechanical work for us, right? And so now imagine a battery in which the fluids flow, but it's built like an hourglass, so you could call it an hourglass cell, right? And what the upper right-hand image there shows you is the concept. Let's imagine that we have this battery electrode that flows, and we pass it through a device that's like an hourglass, and we change the angle of the hourglass, it flows at a different rate, we get a different power out of it, and when we want to go from charging to discharging, we flip it over, right? Well, the students and postdocs developed, you know, a true prototype, it's 3D-printed, it looks like the lower right-hand corner, right? And so the way to think of this is as a concept car for this device. If it becomes a real world, it'll look something different than that, and so we think of this as, you know, a concept design. And I just want to show you that this actually works. Here's the data out of a battery, right? And so if you take that device and hold it at 90 degrees, that's the top curve, you get power generation over a shorter period of time, but a higher power generation, and you change the angle and you, and you can control the power, right? So this is a completely different way of controlling the power in and out of a device. So I'm showing the integration from the chemistry on up to the device level. But now we come back to the ketchup problem, which I'll describe as follows, right? Okay, this is another colleague of mine in mechanical engineering at MIT, and he engineers surfaces to solve problems like this, and you know, ketchup, right? Problem with ketchup is making it flow. And with ketchup, because it has a yield stress, what happens is that it doesn't flow, it doesn't flow, and then it flows too fast, right? You all know this, right? You all know this. We have the exact same problem with this battery we've been designing. But what if you can make it do this? Well, how do you make it do that? What you introduce is a very slippery surface, right? And so now we do some surface engineering at the nanoscale and take this ketchup-like fluid and turn it into a, you know, a better flow battery. And so if you could, if I could ask someone to just run that little video there, I'll show you the difference, right? And this is our flow battery, this gravity-fed flow battery, and the video, hopefully will run. Someone needs to click on it, I think. There we go, perfect, okay. And so that drop of fluid is our ketchup-like battery fluid, and at first, it will do nothing. And, oh, perhaps this isn't going to work. Okay. Well, you'll have to use your imagination, right? But what we've been doing is to take what normally will flow like that, like your ketchup bottle, and turn it into Professor Varanasi's ketchup bottle in order to make this work better. So, and so this comes now down to another level of engineering in order to make these devices work better, and this video, I'm betting, won't work either, but let's give it a try. And if that won't run, you'll have to use your imagination twice, right? But let me describe the concept, right? How do you make a surface that is very, very slippery? Well, it turns out that the friction between two immissible fluids, between oil and water, is very, very low, right? Oil droplets, skid on water, and vice versa, right? This concept is that if you can trap a very thin layer of an immissible fluid in a surface, you can make, create a very high-slip surface that not only gives you a better ketchup bottle, it gives you a better flow battery as well, right? And so I'm going to stop here and just, you know, the main message here is that the battery of tomorrow isn't going to look like the battery of today, right, that you know of, especially for these large-scale applications where you can rethink exactly how you do it. And we start with the chemistry, we go all the way through the mechanical design, and our goal is to come up with, you know, really different device architectures that use, for instance, all the sulfur that's being generated in the world for large-scale storage. So, thank you.
Thank you, Yat. So one quick question, could you comment on the, you talked a little bit about manufacturing scale here, could you say something about the scale of production of today's batteries for portable devices versus the scaling we would need to do for storage for transportation or, or stationary storage?
That's a, that's a, that's a great question, because you might think of, you know, all these cellphone laptop batteries, what does all add up to compared to the scale of what I've been talking about here today, right? As a current production, annual production of portable device batteries is on the order of five gigawatt-hours per year, right? Five gigawatt-hours per year. And what I showed you for that California mandate was five to six gigawatt-hours of storage for that one project in California. And so, and let me give you another metric, 50,000 electric vehicles of Tesla Model S type would add up to about three gigawatt-hours per year, right? So we're taking, talking about, you know, and you know, that's only 50,000 cars, right? And the US sells something like a million, 11 million cars a year, right? And so you can see that in order to get to the, the point of real impact on both transportation and grid storage, we need scales of, you know, of cup, order of magnitude, ultimately, you know, two-ways of magnitude in the manufacturing capacity, right? And that's why we're so focused on ways to make batteries really cheaply, really easily.
Thank you. So our last speaker on the panel is Professor Alex Slocum. He's a professor of mechanical engineering at MIT, so he'll move us up to, to very large scale in, in some of his applications. Alex is, is a very creative designer, I call him MIT's chief gizmo engineer. He has over 100 patents, he's helped start a dozen or more companies, he's, he's won the R&amp;D 100 award some 12 different times. Just last year, he was the Assistant Director for Advanced Manufacturing for President Obama's Office of Science and Technology. Welcome, Alex.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, so after this, we have lunch, right? So I want to do this discussion in a way to also help you guys think different at lunch. And the first thing I want you all to notice is the last, since the beginning of this really excellent conference, has been a lot of discussion on policy and how people interact and the challenges we face, in which you've got a taste here from my colleagues, is the technology that we can bring to bear to bring happiness. It's just a question of how do we actually work together to make this technology happen? And the first thing I want you all to notice is what I'm wearing. Okay, so my wife makes all my Hawaiian shirts, and this is the theme for the day, you see it's cloths, and she also made my tie, and this is, if any Doctor Who fans out there, Tardis' on the tie, tie sheets. Okay, so that's the theme to inject, to start thinking about, that the future really, all we have to do is look to the past to figure out what to do, okay? Now, all this talk about energy, a lot of it's electrons and electronics, but I would like to point out here, assuming I can get the laser pointer to work right, is our fearless leader here in the United States here, he's smiling because I just gave him a shirt that we make in our lab, it says, "And Moses said, and these are the Navier-Stokes equations, and the waters parted." Okay, so it's not just Maxwell's equations of light, it's Navier and Stokes who really have the solution. So with that, let's zoom forward, and, and she also made that, that shirt, too. So any of these talks on the future of energy and the planet and everything, it's always doom and destruction, the world is ending, dogs and cats living together, and if you haven't seen Ghostbusters, you have to watch Ghostbusters. So rather than trying to show plots of temperature and CO2, I'll just say, here's the world, if we're not going to take care of it, it's wrecked. But in reality, dogs and cats can live together very nicely, and I'll show you how. So the first thing is, we just have to figure out what we want to do, because if you look at the last 10 years, we've spent roughly $2 trillion blowing stuff up, and all we got is a lot of holes. So if you take $4 a watt for installed renewables with energy storage, which is about what it costs, two bucks for the energy generation or harvesting, and two bucks for the storage, as Yat pointed out, we could have had 500 gigawatts of CO2-free, 24/7, 365 days a year electric power. That's half of the US consumption. That's about all the consumption of electricity in this whole part of the world, just by saying, okay, let's, let's take, let's take a break from shooting each other and blowing stuff up, let's put that money into renewables, and then in 10 years, when we got our electricity down, we can go back to shooting each other, no problem. So ask yourself, what would the profits do with the next $2 trillion? Think about that. And, and here's some ideas. Whoop, I don't know why it went so fast. I don't know why it went so fast. Okay, so I think symbiotic thinking is the key. We can point out, we got to do this project or that project, but, and who's going to pay for it? And it's a question of carbon taxes and yada, 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 and oh, my God. But let's just look at the US auto industry, for example. We, we have a capacity to make 20 million cars a year. You got to make 16 million cars a year just to break even. But we only make typically about 18 million cars a year, which means if you have about 2 million cars a year idle capacity. Good-looking guys like me and gals like my wife just hanging around, talking about life because we're not making cars, and all that equipment sitting there idle that's been paid for. So if you think in terms of industrial output, it takes, a car is about one and a half tons, and it takes about 1,500 tons of steel equivalent to make a floating offshore wind turbine that gives you about five megawatts nameplate energy capacity. So it takes about 1,000 cars to make one big offshore turbine. If I take this idle auto capacity, in 50 years, I have 500 gigawatts of electric power, 24/7 installed. 50 years. Just by using idle, because remember, idle industrial capacity is a sunk cost. It costs money. So if you can use that capacity to make money, you've got something. Let's look at another way of looking at this. So that's me on the left. I used to be a larger gravitational attraction unit. And I used to, you see on the, on the upper right, that little thing, I used to pack my minivan with brush to take it to the brush dump. We have a small farm. Just the way I used to pack Dunkin' Donuts and coffee into my figure. And, and what I did is, after my doctor, when I was 40, you know, she pulls off her veterinary glove after my big 40 health examination, says, boy, you're in a world of hurt. I started slowly changing. It took me about a year to wean myself from the large coffee with, you know, four wheeps of sugar and four creamers, about 700 calories in one cup of coffee. And I drink three or four of those a day. You know, I call them foo-foo coffees. And you just slowly change. And now I just drink black coffee, and it tastes great, as long as it's reasonable black coffee. And I can't drink the sugared stuff anymore. So the same thing, humans respond really well to slow changes. And I started slowly exercising, and now I can't get enough. You see, I run around the Bosphorus thing in there in the morning. It's a lot of fun. And so now, if you take the amount of calories that are in foo-foo coffees in the United States, right? And just per day, look at the number of 18-wheelers, big trucks of body fat that's generated every day. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't say my name is, but some 20-odd 18-wheelers. And now if you look at the amount of money that's spent on statins and drugs to help us when the fact that we're a large gravitational attraction units, and you take, so the money on foo-foo coffee and the money you save on statins, and you put that to renewables, in 50 years, you can have 500 gigawatts of power. Isn't that amazing? And these are real numbers. These are not just feel-good foo-foo numbers. This is very simple economics. So this is what's up, there's a lot of the political leaders here in this, in this world at this conference. I want you all to start thinking about, how do we change our educational system? How do we start bringing, you know, fun exercise back into school? Squirrels! So you see, you've heard about ADHD and attention and stuff, and people can't pay attention. Maybe the issue is that they're bored with the old way, and we just need to go back to the old days when we used to do things in school. Okay? So that's the big mega thing I want you all to think about. Okay, now, let's see how we're going to get this in technology. Catalysts are key. The first thing everybody has to do here, if you have not done this already, is get this book. If you give a mouse a cookie, and I'm quite serious, this is not a joke thing, get that book and read it. That's the key to everything you're going to do, and then followed by some Dr. Seuss thinking. And let's start with oil. So I'm a gizmologist, but what really I am is I'm a mechanical psychotherapist. I want you to tell me what mechanism, what mechanical problem gives you pain. I want you to tell me your fantasies of devices to give you energy. Okay? And we'll sit down with the geeks, and we'll use physics, and we'll figure out how to create those devices. So I do a lot, a lot of work with various oil companies. This one's happened to be with Schlumberger. And my friends there were saying, you know, to get really deep holes in the hot, where the hot zones are, and to drill so we can really frac and get more gas and more oil from long, long away, we have a problem with seals. And everybody knows that the reason fish don't have propellers is, God knew there would be a problem with the seals. Art, art. So instead of looking for a polymer chemist to design a better seal so the rotary bit can go drill deep and hot into the rock, my task was to design a rotary bit that doesn't use rubber seals, which I did. And it's about an hour-long discussion of this special geometry, which I tell you about, I will instantly be melted, but it looks something like this, the special cam and a ceramic ball and magic happiness in the grooves. And this is actually cheaper to make and build than the old system that uses seals and happy patent. And this is actually the standard rotary steerable bit in production and use for the last several years, drilled thousands and thousands of kilometers, long horizontal wells, never a failure yet in the seals. So this is one small nanopart of the technology created. Why we can, in the US now, frac and drill and generate gobs more oil and gas, because you just have to tell the geeks about your problem. Okay? And then we'll invent new, new fun stuff. And this is what I would like to call the Britney effect. Remember Britney Spears? I had two nieces, young teenage girls at the time when Britney Spears was happy, and I used to torment them with Britney Spears jokes. But I find that it's actually quite useful in the oil and gas industry, because reality is here and always will be here, that oops, I mean, this was a very unfortunate accident, the Deepwater Horizon, and I was on Secretary Chu's commission for this. And it was very sad that it happened, and the lawyers and the people are trying to work out exactly why, et cetera. But you know, it's not new. It happened with Ixtoc also previously, and it'll happen again, despite our best efforts. So how can we be prepared? Enter my nieces again, because you see, after they, I have three sons and my brother has three girls, and we'd like swap. And after the girls would leave my house after a weekend, this is what I would pull out of the bathtub. Anybody have people with long hair in their house? You know, I used to have long hair. And so this is my basement, that's nice sun, and this is a full-scale model of the kink, and that red stuff is a wire. And what we're doing, instead of doing a classic junk shot, who's to develop a system, it's called the hampering active wellbore kit. And it's this machine that attaches to the base of your BOP. And if the rams fail to deploy, you start feeding in a wire. You create a synthetic hairball. And this is testing out very, very nicely. We have a startup company that Repsol is actually funding, and we're going to bring this to bear. So this would be your emergency kit that fits on the base of your blowout preventer. You have, you get a blowout. You just go, start feeding in that wire. And in about an hour, you, it's clogged. Very cheap, very effective. Wind. See, there's that mouse thing again. And you heard the tipping point. If we can lower the cost of wind by about 10%, it's going to have a huge revolution. And it's not just lowering the cost of wind, we got to find more areas where you have Class IV wind and better, which means we can either speed up the planet, not a good idea, or go higher. So the physics is, is that when you go up higher, the wind gets much better. And most wind turbines are deployed in the 80 to 100-meter zone. And the reason is, is that's as high as you can effectively build the towers, because you got to bring the pieces of the towers along, and they're these pesky things called bridges that you have to go under. So your tower is limited about 4 and 1/4 meters in diameter. If you can go to the theoretical ideal for a tower, it's about seven meters diameter, 20 to 5 to 30-millimeter wall thickness, and I can taper up at about a 1-degree angle to 140-meter tower. So previously, all these Class III wind sites are now Class IV. And look at our cost curves, that the cost of a transportable tower goes crazy, and this optimal tower very slowly rises. So now I can deploy 120-meter towers, big cost savings, and I get not only better wind, better energy, and I, and net cost of wind power will be lowering by 10%. In the United States, there's a state called Maine, north of Boston, and there's hardly any people live in Maine, because it's mostly forests owned by the paper mills, and they don't know what to do with the forests, because no one wants paper anymore. Maine has six gigawatts of energy potential at 80 meters on ridges. If we introduce 140-meter towers, you don't have to shave the forests at all, you can leave them there. And there's plenty of logging roads in Maine. So I predict the next big revolution in the United States, equivalent to the shale gas revolution, is going to be 140-meter windmills. Because in Maine, if I deploy 140-meter wind turbine towers, that six gigawatts of wind energy potential goes to?
60 gigawatts.
Renewable energy. At 10% less cost than now, you pay for wind energy. And how do we do that? Well, we invented a new way of, instead of bringing the towers under bridges to site, we bring our special machine. This is actually our first prototype, and it worked right out of the box, because physics is useful. And we're going to make essentially giant pipe mills on site, and we are just going to extrude out essentially in one piece tapered spiral welded towers, 140 meter long. Pretty cool, huh? I like big steel. All right. So offshore, so what about the storage thing? It turns out that if, if you put long tubes on the floor of the ocean, and it works at at least, you got to be at least 300 meters deep, 700 meters is the sweet spot. And here's the mooring cables that go to these long tubes. So all your giant windmill farm offshore will just have, be connected by the tubes on the floor of the ocean. Those tubes are like lakes. And they work like this. When you've got plenty of extra electricity, the turbine, and this is a standard off-the-shelf, go to your local do-it-yourself store and buy a 700-megawatt pumped hydro turbine, you pump the water out. So on the end of, say, a 20-kilometer-long tube, you'll have one of these big turbines. You pump the water out of the tube, and then when the wind isn't blowing, and it's 5:00 in the afternoon, and everyone wants to turn on their microwave, their television, blah, 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 the water flows back in through the turbine into the tube and fills the tube back up. It's just the standard pumped hydro, but you don't have to wreck your countryside shaving off the tops of mountains. Because, remember that thing about symbiotic engineering? We use these tubes not only as the mooring devices for those offshore wind turbines, they are also simultaneously the energy storage elements. So we're working with a large construction company on the details of how you would do that. And if you're an oil and gas life form, you know that, for example, the J-Pipeline-ing method, which is something I did as an intern way back in the previous millennia, wow, is how you can deploy this very, very easily. And the numbers work out very nicely. The other thing on symbioticness is when you have wind, you often have waves. Any sailor-type life forms in the audience? Right? Sailing's cool, waves. And we can, designing these girdles around the bases of the offshore wind turbines, because you ask yourself, you pay all this steel for an offshore wind turbine tower, and everyone goes, offshore, it's too expensive. Well, what's expensive is not the wind turbine, but it's the tower you're putting offshore. And if I'm going to use that tower just to hold a wind turbine, that's only a fraction of its potential. I can also put this girdle around it of the wave energy harvester. And the cool thing is, is that, and that's actually a to-scale model, that's not a, just a pretty crayon cartoon, that you can generate in these good offshore wind sites almost as much power from harvesting the wave energy as you can the wind energy. So I essentially double the energy I can harvest from that tower. So I've now cut the cost per watt that the tower has to pay by a factor of two. So it's all about, if you give a mouse a cookie, if you give an engineer a problem and say, well, you're doing it this way, it's too expensive, figure out how to make it cheaper. Sure. And now let's look at Mediterranean. You see, red is good. And off the coast here in Turkey in particular, it's really good, because this is deep in here. Here, you're not going to deploy too much. It's beautiful islands, sailing, not very deep. You could if you wanted. But note in particular, this zone in here, and in particular in here. You have very good wind, and it's very deep. And look at the scale here, that's about, what, 350 kilometers. In this zone in here, watch what you can do if you wanted to. You're going to see, think, excuse me, think about what you could do in that zone. At the end, I've got a slide that I think you'll, you'll be interested in. Now let's go back to nuclear, or to nuclear. Oh, my goodness. What's this moose doing here? So remember, if you give a mouse a cookie, that's for something on the order of five megawatts, you know, wind turbines and stuff. But for the really big problems, you got to give a moose a muffin. And nuclear, as we've heard in the past few days, whether you like it or not, has got to be part of the baseload energy solution if we're going to save the planet. Period. You, you can drive your limousine to the environmental protest against it all you want. We call those people limousine liberals. But in the end is, you got to have nuclear. So that just means we got to figure out how to do it nicely. Even if you do that, you have a problem. There's only about 100 years of terrestrial uranium left. So it doesn't do us any good to go switch to nuclear, and at giant scale, for 100 years, it's gone. Well, it turns out, in the oceans, there is 1,000 times as much uranium. So we have enough uranium in the oceans for at least 100,000 years of power. So even my grandkids will be very happy. And the polymer chemists in Japan and the Oak Ridge National Labs, United States, have been working very hard. And my job in this is to develop mechanism to deploy these special polymers so we can pull the uranium out of the seawater economically. And we're down to around $300 to $400 a ton. We see that going down to $100 to $200 a ton. And here's the interesting thing. If uranium was, yellowcake was easy to get, we won't have a proliferation issue, because there won't only be a few countries in the world that control the supply. It's easy for anybody to get it, which means that you no longer have to store the spent nuclear fuel, because you're worried you may have, not have any uranium one day, so you got to store that spent fuel in case you have to reprocess it in order to get the plutonium to run your reactors. But we would rather people didn't have plutonium lying around to run their reactors. So our goal is, is to make it really cheap and easy for uranium, for everybody, forever. And here's another little thing about symbioticness. This again is a scale model. And what you have here is about four kilometers of this special rope, this fuzzy rope that has the polymer deployed upon it. And the rope goes up and down, and by the time this point on this rope has gone up and down, up and down, up and down, and gotten to this tank here where the uranium is stripped off, it's been about a month. And this size, on this five-megawatt turbine, this is really to scale. This is the size of the uranium harvester I need to generate enough uranium to fuel a five, five megawatts worth of power in a uranium plant onshore. So for every five-megawatt wind turbine I put offshore, I can generate five megawatts of electricity from the wind, five from the wave power, and I can also pull out five worth of uranium from a nuclear plant. So I can get 15 megawatts of power, where people in the previously thought, in that one piece of ocean, I could only get five. So that's pretty cool. So we're psyched. And that's a very aggressive, ongoing project for that we have. Oops. We got a problem again. We're not that innocent. Remember the Britney fans? So what are you going to do with the waste, the spent nuclear fuel? The nuclear, the nuclear industry and the planet are going to be saved, I predict, by the oil industry. Isn't that cool? Because the oil folks know how to look below the ground for oil, right? Really well, and water. And they also know when they don't find oil and water. And when you don't find oil and water really deep, that means it's a great place to put a reactor on top of the land and drill a long hole down horizontally, and in that hole, I will put my spent fuel. Turns out that if you drill a hole about a meter in diameter, a kilometer long horizontally, you can put all the spent fuel that that reactor over its 40-year lifetime will generate. Pretty cool, huh? So the answer is not to build nuclear plants where political or whatever things are needed. You site the plant where you have the geology beneath the plant to bury the waste. People say, oh, you can need cooling water for your turbines and stuff. Well, we can manage that, or within 10 years, the supercritical CO2 cycle will be available, and you won't need all that water anyway. And then you directionally drill down, deep, and you put your fuel, spent fuel there. So we have that technology today. In Cameron Parish in Louisiana, Chevron drilled a 30,000-foot, whoops, sorry, 10-kilometer-deep gas well. It's about 200 millimeters diameter at the bottom. And we can do that. We can give you your, your one meter. No problem. And we can do that, we can give you your one meter, no problem. Just tell us you want it. Solar energy, and I'll speed up here a little bit, we call this CS Pond, concentrated solar power on demand, taking inspiration from nature. And what we're going to do here is, is that instead of these big towers and nice farmland for vast quantities of solar cells or heliostats, we're going to take steep hillsides where you don't do anything, put the heliostats on them, beam the light from the mirrors directly into this little cave. And in that cave, the sunlight comes in and penetrates molten salt bath, here's chloride salts at 1,000 degrees, but we're only going to run 500, 600. And you're, you no longer have tubes and pumps and expensive stuff, we've gotten rid of all of that. Because if you give a mouse a cookie, they want a glass of milk, which means then they'll have a milk mustache. You've got to read the rest of the book for the whole story. You've got to simplify things, be happy with just a cookie. And so here's what happens, is during the day, you charge the, the sunlight goes into the molten salt, makes it hot, and this gray thing here is a divider plate which moves down. And the blue stuff is cold molten salt, and the red stuff going up here is molten salt that goes to your power generator. And the cold salt that comes out of the power generator, the heat exchanger, is injected into the bottom. At night, you close the doors, or when it's cloudy, and you're still pulling hot salt off to generate power, and the cold salt's going to the bottom, the divider plate's moving up. So this is the actual scale model, these two life forms here, and this will give you four megawatts of electricity for 40 hours. So the scale of this thing here is 160 megawatt-hours of power, excuse me, energy, in that, in that scale. And that's real big, you may not need that much. You just have to tell us how much you want, and we'll scale it accordingly. This is a project we're doing with the Masdar Institute of Technology in Abu Dhabi, they have a beam-down tower, and we're really aggressively bringing this forward, we're really quite excited. And there's a lot of potential easy sites. If you take just a small portion of some missile ranges that the US government operates, you know, bombing ranges in the southwest United States, we can give you, we could give them 40 gigawatts of 24/7 electric power in a very, very small area of land. Again, this is like the natural gas revolution, we could totally change the face of electricity. And the cost of this stuff is on the order of about 10 to 15 cents a kilowatt-hour, coming down to. Lots of sunny land all over the world and hills. So geeks, we use physics, it's our partner, to cut through problems. You give me a problem, you think that log is real hard, I have my chainsaw, and we will play together. So the future, engineering is a blend of science and statistics. And you've got to work, we're going to work with managers and politicians, we can have a beautiful future to paint this beautiful canvas of life. I'm really optimistic. We just have to decide what we, as a team, the human race, has to, wants to do to make it a happy planet for all. We've just got to spend our resources on that. And let me go back here, whoop, to this one, I wanted you, this was, remember your homework? In this area in here, if I did this offshore wind farm zone thing we were talking about, you could provide the power for almost 70 million people in Turkey. Truly amazing, at 2 kilowatts a person. Taking this area for wind, or maybe you want to spread it out a little bit. And not only that, if you start thinking about fish farms, what other uses could you do with offshore structures? I think Turkey could really lead a renaissance in the whole Mediterranean basis, because you have the technology, you have the manufacturing, you've got the history. Look at your great architecture here, and the things that were accomplished by the people working together to do giant things. So that's my challenge, not only to the world, but to my wonderful hosts here in particular. Take these ideas for technology with the ideas for what should happen politically that has been discussed the past few days. Create this vision where you, as a nation, say, you know what? We're going to show the rest of the world how to do this. It's not that complicated, it's just a function of figuring out what we want to do and applying our will to it. And we can really paint a beautiful future for not only us, but for the whole world. So that's my challenge to you, and I hope to be back in a few years and to see that happen. So with that, have a happy lunch, get if you give a mouse a cookie, and we'll see you tonight at dinner, too.
I think we're challenged for time here, so we're going to stop the session. At this point, you can ask some questions informally after, after we stop. I'd like to remind you that the next session begins in here in five minutes, at 12 o'clock. It's on economic reform and investment in an era of new divisions in Europe. Also like to remind you to wear your badge at all times, and as you leave, to take all your belongings with you. Thank you very much, panelists, and thank you, audience.